Ladies and gentlemen, President of the American Society of Clinical Oncology, Dr. Sandra M. Swain.
It's my great pleasure to introduce our guest speaker, Dr. Paul Farmer. He's a medical anthropologist, physician, and founding director of Partners in Health. For over two decades, Partners in Health has provided health care to the world's core, fueled by its motto of "Doing whatever it takes to make patients well," just as we would do, as if a member of our own families or we ourselves were ill. Dr. Farmer is professor and chair of the Department of Global Health and Social Medicine at Harvard Medical School and chief of the Division of Global Health Equity at Brigham and Women's Hospital. He also serves as UN Special Advisor to the Secretary General on Community-Based Medicine and Lessons from Haiti. Dr. Farmer and his colleagues have pioneered novel community-based treatment strategies that demonstrate the delivery of high-quality health care in resource-poor settings. He's written extensively on health, human rights, and the consequences of social inequality. His most recent book is To Repair the World: Paul Farmer Speaks to the Next Generation. And I've just finished it, so those of you who haven't read it, I recommend it highly. He's a recipient of numerous honors and is a member of the Institute of Medicine, of the National Academy of Sciences, and of the American Academy of Arts and Sciences. So please give a very warm welcome to the man who would cure the world, Dr. Paul Farmer.
Thank you very much. It's a big crowd, and I have to recall the words of the Irish singer Bono when giving the Harvard address. He said, "I'm really nervous because I've never spoken in front of a crowd this small I am not going to today try and be an oncologist or a hematologist, but to draw some lessons about cancer prevention, diagnosis, and care in what these days are called resource-poor settings. Of course, those can occur anywhere on the planet, and they do in this country as well. And I'm not going to try, as I said, to be a hematologist oncologist. I am trained in infectious disease and have been doing this sort of work for 30 years with some success and often failure, and have been very fortunate over the last decade to see more and more oncologists and hematologists and the ancillary staff that work with them become interested in the challenge that we face in addressing cancer in the developing world. Wait, am I going the right way? Sorry. Hey, there's Sandy Swain. I'm more of a clicker than a mouse guy. Now, I just invite you to think about—I happen to be on call the night this girl came in. This is in rural Rwanda, and she's had a fungating mass, as you see, but it smelled so foul that I had hoped that maybe this could be an infectious disease, because a lot of them that cause masses, usually not of this size, are curable and could be readily cured. That was not the case, as you can guess. And so the next step for all of us would be biopsy, would be tissue. And this is the hospital where I met her now. Granted, this is the hospital the way it looked a few years before. An abandoned hospital in central, southern—or southern—Rwanda, abandoned since the genocide and war. Actually, some of my colleagues from Rwanda are here today, this morning. Now, this is the part where things usually end up failing, because it's difficult to imagine a biopsy, this lesion, and finding the resources that would be necessary to treat it, because it's hard to argue that there are no treatable—there are lesions that are completely untreatable that would look like that, and of course, that was not the case. But it's very difficult to build these systems, or what are often called platforms for care that have to extend from the hospital into the community and have clinics for regular follow-up care. And when you go to a place where none of those things exist, you have to build them. And I'm going to talk about building that capacity and why we need your help. Now, this is my line of work. You all know that ART means antiretroviral therapy. This is what's happening in the world of cancer as well. So if you're an oncologist, let's say a pediatric oncologist, just put in—instead of AIDS, put in pediatric leukemias, and instead of ART, choose the other kind of combination chemotherapy that you use. And think what this might look if you were to, say, look at leukemia deaths among children in Africa, or lymphoma, or breast cancer. And this outcome gap requires the attention of academic medical centers and of practitioners here in this country, termed in this graph, which I didn't make, the Western world. And we can see enormous differences, as I'll show you. Now, this is what was happening only 10 years ago. Some of you, like me, were in training when antiretroviral therapy came online in the Boston Teaching Hospitals where I trained, Mass General, the Brigham, the Ekanist. And those hospitals, like many other in American cities, had plenty of young people dying of AIDS in them. And when the ART—when ART was proved to be effective, the hospitals cleared out. And this became an ambulatory challenge for most Americans with HIV disease. Now, what really happened after this is one of the greatest surprises of modern medicine, in my view. This is another patient of mine. I won't go into either—the his clinical presentation is obviously to many of you HIV disease and tuberculosis, but it could be any wasting disease. And instead of having an increase in death expectancy—this is a patient from Haiti—there was an increase in life expectancy, because the staff and stuff that we needed to treat people like this young man became available, increasingly so, because there were resources invested, a lot of them—I'm proud to say—American resources in AIDS care. Not just AIDS prevention, which is absolutely integral to the future of the epidemic, but actually integrating in prevention and care. And that's one of the lessons that an infectious disease doctor wants to share with all of you at ASCO. To siloise prevention and care activities is very often a mistake, even though we ourselves may have our tasks in those that are squarely under the rubric of prevention, diagnosis, or care. Think about cancer prevention campaigns. You know, they vary from disease-to-disease, the work of pathologists and others in diagnosis, and the work of those, like many of you, who deliver care. But siloising our approach and our funding and our commitment to delivery is a big mistake, and I mean delivery for the poor. Let me show you very quickly a couple of views in the late '90s after the development of ART. Basically, it was all over the public health community and policymaking communities—that it was not cost-effective or sustainable to use antiretroviral therapy in Africa. Now, this was an unfortunate claim for a couple of reasons. One, because it was false, and another, because this was by now the leading infectious killer of young adults in the world, and especially on that continent. So this kind of defeatism, this failure of imagination, had to be challenged, and it was. We had a lot of help from AIDS activists, and we'd need more help from survivors and cancer activists. But the slope of that curve of increased death expectancy is being reversed by investing staff and stuff in these problems. Now, there were also all kinds of ridiculous claims made about cost-effectiveness. This is not a modeling exercise, but three costs for the same regimens in the same year: the average annual wholesale price for a three-drug regimen for AIDS at that time, the price that Partners in Health was paying with a mix of concessions and generics, and the International Dispensary Association's price. And since 2002, with the expansion of care, those prices have dropped more quickly. It now costs, on average, for an adult $90 a year for a three-drug regimen with good outcomes. You can imagine what I'm thinking about—the chemo and the diagnostics that you use in your work. Plus, people go back to work. This is another patient of mine from Haiti, dying in June 1999. As her physician—and her father was a good friend of mine—what did I say? I said, "Stop dying already. We have treatments. Here they are." And she got better, resumed work. And the second picture there, which I like very much—it's blurry, because that's her 10 years later giving a talk at Harvard about her experience, and she's still on the same medications. Now, why hasn't she acquired drug resistance? Maybe she has, but wasn't apparent in her clinical response, because she has a community health worker and support in the community. And I'll now switch to cancer and talk about that. Now, there's a myth, which I'm not going to spend a lot of time busting, because I believe you already know, that cancer is a huge problem in low-income and middle-income countries. In fact, the majority of incident cases of malignancies are in these countries. The funding gap, you already know about. It looks a lot like AIDS only 10 years ago. The massive burden of disease in the poor world and very little to address those concerns. Some years ago, Larry Schulman, who many of you know from the Dana Farber and the Brigham, and a group of us, Felicia Knoll among them, were just asking a very simple question: What are the cancers in low-income countries that we could address, obviously through integration of prevention and care, but also through other means that we could find or bring to bear in settings of rural poverty like the ones we worked in in Malawi, Rwanda, Lesotho, Haiti, et cetera? We thought there'd be big literature on this, very specific question, but there really wasn't. And which is another call to all of you involved in clinical trials. This is a new kind of clinical trial we're suggesting. It's a trial in equity, a trial in justice, to provide already-proven therapies to people who have great need of them. And again, the role of American medicine, including academic medicine, in this trial of equity and justice is central, as I'll try to show. Now, this silobusters term—I already mentioned the word silo now three times—it's been my experience as an infectious disease doctor, and this—my friend Ami Bat, who's here today, reminded me that this is a group who already knows how to break down silos. They're used to working with surgeons, with social workers, with anesthesiologists, palliative care teams, et cetera. We need that kind of approach to cancer prevention and care on a global stage. Back to Ringwauv, back to the hospital. This is 10 years ago, almost, nine years ago, and some of you have been to Rwanda, working with us. What needs to be done? Well, first of all, as a former president of ours said, "It's not nuclear science to figure out how to repair and clean up a hospital." If the hospital operating room had been abandoned for 10 years, that doesn't mean it can't be fixed up. Same for the wards. Why would anyone want to go there when they're filthy, they don't have staff, not a single doctor in this district until we got there, and they don't have the stuff they need? No staff, no stuff, no resources. But it doesn't have to be that way. So of course, we saw the same types of patients. This is a guy with, again, HIV disease and tuberculosis, actually, early HIV disease, not advanced HIV disease. It's indigestion and tuberculosis that was getting him. And I always say to my medical students, right, if I show them these slides, that he goes from looking like Skeletor to looking like he needs Lipitor. But most of the people we see are not—they don't have AIDS. They have other primary care problems. They have cancer. They had a lot of malaria. Things are getting better in Rwanda, as far as malaria, AIDS, and tuberculosis go, with some of the steepest declines over the last decade in human mortality ever documented. That leaves a lot of people living longer lives, of course, and having—being diagnosed, if they ever are, with malignancies, chronic disease, and problems for which there are not always ready fixes. Social support was, as I said, from our work in Haiti, one of the key lessons we drew, is that you can't deliver this kind of care, whether it be for AIDS, tuberculosis, osteomyelitis, or any kind of chronic affliction, major mental illness, even serious complications of coronary artery disease or congestive heart failure. Very hard to not have people helping you in the community. We use community health workers. We train them to recognize complications of therapy, symptoms that merit further evaluation in a clinic or a hospital, and we try to help patients, almost all of them who live in poverty, with these wraparound services they need in order for our effective therapies to be effective. The outcomes of work like this are pretty stunning. If you compare the outcomes for AIDS treatment with a community-based model to standard-of-care, where community health workers are not working with doctors and physicians, the only settings in which you can get outcomes rivaling these ones—these are from Rwanda—is in a clinical trial. This is not a clinical trial. Again, it is a clinical trial in equity. Now, the big question I'm asking all of you, of course, is why can't we do this with cancer? One of the first answers I heard about 20 years ago, when I was in training at the Dana Farber and the Brigham, was, "Well, you can't treat cancer without cancer doctors." But what if we'd said that about AIDS? How many AIDS specialists do you think there are in rural Rwanda, Malawi, Kenya? And I can tell you, the answer back then was zero. And in many places where millions of people are now on therapy with really pretty good treatment, it's still zero, or it's one, or two, or it's growing very slowly. So the challenges to effective care are fairly straightforward. First of all, and I don't even mention it here, you need oncologists, but they don't have to be there all the time. When they're there, it drags up the quality of care. There are ways with new technology platforms to do this in an efficient and transregional way, and I'll go back to that in a second. You need the staff and the stuff. But the staff might look different if we take a hard look at the human resources we really need to deliver health care. This long list is pretty much—we see it all the time. Patients have wandered around from place to place. They receive a tardy diagnosis, not because they don't care or their families don't care, but they have no way to get a diagnosis. So they go from city to city, using up every penny that their family has, and this immiserates entire families. In fact, catastrophic illness is the leading cause of poor people falling into destitution in the world. And it's often true in this country as well. And there are all these hidden costs we don't know about, and of course, we don't have blood banks, we don't have electricity or labs, and we don't have skilled hemonk nurses. So how would you get around this? And I want to pay tribute to Larry Schulman, who is here today, and the reason that I'm here, along with Dr. Swain's invitation. Larry Schulman, as many of you know, is chief medical officer at the Dana Farber, also happened to be one of my teachers when I was a housestaff and resident and a great friend. I said to him some years ago, "All I want for Partners in Health is your firstborn son," which, by the way, came to pass, because his son, who's just graduated from Harvard Medical School yesterday, has spent five years working with us in Malawi and Rwanda, usually on cancer care. Larry Schulman helped with many others—I'm sure he'd be quick to say—to set up a collaborative care model that could reach from academic medical centers into some of the poorest parts of rural Africa and rural Haiti. It needs to be brought to scale. It merits serious support from the professional bodies, such as ASCO, the largest, and also philanthropy, others who care about making medicine matter to people living in extreme poverty. The medications we get, we get those from the Dana Farber. There's lots of other solutions we could find if we all turned our attentions to pooled procurement, improving supply chain, et cetera. We get great expert consultation. We're connected via the Internet, of course, and we believe that these protocols can be brought to scale, especially with the help of that platform that I described: community health workers, clinics, hospitals. And thanks to the Brigham, we get the path done, because, as you all know, tumor is And we're making a lot of progress in moving a lot of these technologies from Boston right into the heart of Rwanda, as I'll show you in a second. When I say high-quality care, we're all trying. You know, you can argue about the term "high quality," but I can tell you, the quality of the effort is very high. And again, I hope you will encourage Dr. Schulman and his colleagues, who are doing this truly heroic work of making hematology and oncology matter. Social support, same system. I'm going to skip over this. It's not any different from a patient with AIDS or another chronic disease. Everybody needs accompaniment if they have serious illness. We all will too, probably. And there are ways to build protocols into this platform. You could say, "Well, you can't write a protocol for compassion." That's true. Or empathy, or love. But you can make systems equitable and compassionate, functionally, and that's what we're trying to do. So about this girl, of course, who had rhabdomyosarcoma, she did get a biopsy, and she did get chemo, 48 weeks of it, and surgery in rural Rwanda. And she's much older now. In fact, I saw her not too long ago at the opening of a hospital in northern Rwanda, which I'll show you in closing, and she gave one of the keynote speeches. And she's doing very well, and she has no evidence of persistent disease. What about easier cases? I've just got three, not to talk about the patients, but to say, for some malignancies, we now have very easy deliverables, easy-to-use deliverables, that are PO, like the ones we use to treat HIV disease, tuberculosis, pneumonia, and even HCP. Well, why is it that we can't get these new innovations out to people who need them most? There are a lot of people working to answer that question, and the answer, of course, is that you can, if you can get the staff and stuff that you need. It's another—these are Rwandan patients. Finally, there are times when we divide that labor between an emerging academic medical center in a place like Rwanda, and many of you would be surprised. We just finished building a teaching hospital in Haiti, for example. I hope some of you are following that, central Haiti. And we called it Mirabalay University Hospital. And people said, "But there's not a university there." And we said, "Yeah, but not yet. That's what we should be doing in Rwanda." And in this case, a lot of the work, ones who hadn't placed this basic platform, the staff and stuff, to deliver ABVD, for example, do the chemo there, and this boy later got radiation in Uganda, because there is no XRT in Rwanda yet, and a bone marrow transplant in Boston. He's doing well, a couple of years out of his therapy. So if we could get this failure of imagination and say, "Well, is it true that just because rural Africa doesn't have cancer specialists, that we can't treat these patients?" Because they have plenty of cancer, but no cancer, no oncologists. Is it true that because they don't have XRD, they couldn't have it one day? Or even BMT? The quality of these technologies is improving, and that outcome gap that you saw with AIDS in the Western world and Africa, that outcome gap is growing as regards cancer care. We have to all be involved in that. Finally, again, this is in Rwanda. You'll recognize—I'm sure you'll recognize Dr. Tarsee, the medical director, and Larry Schulman, and Naio Tapela, Minister of Health, former president of the U.S.A. This is another one of those coalitions that brought something out of nothing. This is probably rural Rwanda's first cancer care center. A lot of the talk was, "Well, you can only prevent cancer in such settings. You can't treat it. It's not cost-effective," et cetera, the same long list. This is up and running, and some of you in this room have been good enough to donate your time to work here, and I thank you for doing that. We've had a lot of help from oncology nurses, most of them from the Dana Farber. Their own impression, the nurses from Boston and elsewhere, is that the quality of care that their local partners can be taught to give is very good. They just want a chance, the doctors and nurses and lab techs, they want a chance to do what we do, when we work in a safe, clean hospital with the tools that we need. So here's my last—my closing challenge, and I hope it's okay to say, we don't want history to repeat. We don't want—we want good history to repeat, that is, what happened with AIDS. It's been a lot of success in 30 years. Think of the scientific progress on that one disease, 30 years. Identifying the causative pathogen, putting together and improving good diagnostics, and then the development of effective suppressive therapy with multi-drug regimens, going from zero drugs to one, to now 20. There are a lot of challenges, but to see that technology, that basic science linked to drug development and diagnostic development, linked to real delivery for people living in poverty and with AIDS, is an amazing victory for science and medicine. That's what we need to happen with malignancies, and we're not there yet. One of the things that we need to do, and this is why Larry Schulman is a hero to me, is we have to have a "there, there." We can't just talk about big plans, about how we're not, you know, going to put a lab somewhere or not, or that it's not possible to deliver this care in rural Africa or in a slum somewhere in a city in Africa or in rural Haiti. That's not true. We need to get those pilot projects up and running and supported. Not a thousand points of light approach, but more effort put into projects, platforms that are built and can be improved. Obviously, we need to start—or to codify and improve—in-service training and other kinds of training for the local physicians and nurses and allied health professionals. They want that, as I said. Our young trainees want it. Our medical students, our residents, and our fellows seem to want this kind of experience and work, and it's very different from 25 years ago, when I graduated from medical school. As is the tradition here, we need to formalize our training for subspecialists, such as oncologists. But just as you have subspecialist training in, say, head and neck cancers, or breast cancers, or sarcomas, just getting the subspecialty of cancer prevention and care up and running in Africa, in rural areas especially, is a big challenge, but one we can meet. HRH just means Human Resources for Health. It's a project that was just a dream five years ago, when the Ministry of Health of Rwanda saw the improvement that was coming and said, "We need to train subspecialists, surgeons, oncologists, psychiatrists." We have none. And a lot of public health people said, "Eh, you know, that's not the priority. Focus on vaccine distribution, take care of malaria." And we were doing that. But the need for subspecialists, including cancer specialists, is never going to go away. So the HRH program, which was put together by the Clinton Foundation, the Ministry of Health in Rwanda, with a lot of support—I'm proud to say—from Harvard and from Partners in Health, has already brought together 12 American universities, a feat in and of itself, to go and work in Rwanda. And I'm talking about faculty, some senior faculty, who are going to create those programs, training programs, for nurses, doctors, and managers in Rwanda. That's the way to do it. You could say it costs a lot, but most of the cost of it came from already-dedicated U.S. funding that was diverted to this new priority, in part because of efficiencies that had come out of improving the work that was going on in AIDS care. This can be done, and it can be done—if it can be done in Rwanda, it can be done in other places as well. Finally, we really need to build this science of delivery around cancer care, or around cancer diagnosis, or around cancer prevention. Usually, in medicine, there's a lot of attention paid to basic science discovery. We need that. That's what gives us the tools we use. There's a lot of attention paid, especially by the industry, to the development of new tools, whether diagnostics, or therapeutics, or biotech innovations. That third D, after discovery and development, that third D of discovery is a black box. We don't think it's elegant to study. It's too messy. It's not associated with publication in high-prestige journals. That's really got to end if we want to understand how to improve the U.S. health care system, where the time between discovery and proven effectiveness and actual deleverage and actual delivery is very long. And that time can stretch to an eternity in places where there are no platforms at all. Building up this delivery science, documenting what it is we're doing in a place like Rwanda or Malawi, and disseminating that progress, perhaps in part through new online platforms like Global Health Delivery Online, new journals, conferences like these, and building new platforms that we don't really see yet. This is an important role, I would argue, for academic medicine and for the professional societies like ASCO, to which so many of us belong. Finally, and I promise my friends, Ami and Franklin, and many other fellows and recent graduates that I would say this, to the senior figures in oncology, if I'm right, and what I'm seeing at Harvard, at the Brigham, is not radically different from what you're seeing where you work, a lot of young trainees want to do global oncology, global cancer care. And we're going to have to think of new ways to support this work if we want to continue to draw the kind of talent that we have drawn to the war on cancer and continue to draw. And so I hope we will think hard, or you will think hard, about new tracts for care that don't replace the fellowship, say, in general oncology, or surgical oncology, or whatever tracts might be of interest to them, as they were to you, but to complement those tracts with a health equity tract, that is global cancer care. Because global doesn't mean international. That's what it used to mean. They used to call it international health. This city of Chicago is on the globe too. All the places that you live are on the globe. Equity and global health equity are universal concerns and ones to which I am very proud. ASCO has already turned its attention, and I thank you for inviting me to join your annual congress. Thank you.